Good morning and welcome to the meeting of the Ovelling Scrutiny Management Board. My name is councillor Tom Smith, I am the Vice Chairman of the Board. The Chairman is unavailable to attend today, so I am chairing the meeting on his behalf. Welcome to all members and officers in attendance today. The video feed of this meeting is being broadcast live via the County Council's website, and I would also like to welcome members of the press and public who are watching our meeting today. Welcome to the following executive councillors and executive support councillors who are attending our meeting today. Councillor Martin Hill, Leader of the Council and Executive Councillor for Resources, Communications and Commissioning, and councillor Richard Boothroyd, Executive Councillor for People Management, Legal and Corporate Policy. Councillor Martin Whittington, Executive Support Councillor for Resources, Communication and Commissioning, is attending via Teams, and councillor Hilton Spratt, Executive Support Councillor for People Management and Legal Services. Welcome to the following members of the corporate leadership team. Debbie Barnes, Chief Executive, Andrew Crookham, Executive Director for Resources, and Andy Goodson, Executive Director for Place, attending via Teams. I'd like to begin with a health and safety announcement, there is no fire drill planned for this meeting. In the event of a fire alarm sounding, we need to leave the council chamber through the doors behind you and leave the building through the reception into the front car park, where we will need to wait for further instructions. Can I please remind everybody to ensure your mobile devices are on silent or off when invited to speak? Can you please ensure that you switch your microphone on? Otherwise, those attending the meeting via Teams and members of the press and public listening to our meeting online won't be able to hear you. Please be aware, you will need to speak directly into the microphone to be heard. If you wish to speak during the meeting, can you please raise your hand? And Nigel West, Head of Democratic Services and Statutory Scrutiny Officer, will make a note. Apologies for absence and replacement members. Emily, do we have any apologies and replacements?
Thank you, Chairman. We've received apologies from councillor Parker and councillor Strangle. And can I also note apologies from Glenn Garridge and Heather Sandy.
Declarations of interest. Do members have any declarations of interest they wish to make? Thank you. Minutes of the meeting on the 27th of October, this is to confirm and sign the minutes for the last meeting of the board on 27th of October 2022 as a correct record. Do I have a provision second for the minutes? Thank you, councillor Pepper. And I'll second them if I'm able to. All those in favour? Any against? And any abstentions? One abstention. Two abstentions. Thank you, they're carried, I shall sign those later. Announcements, by myself on behalf of councillor Parker. Democratic Services has held an election for a new parent governor representative to replace Mrs Alex Sayer on the board, and the Children and Young People Scrutiny Committee, unfortunately no nominations were received, and Democratic Services will look to hold another election in the new year. Executive councillor announcements. Does any executive councillor wish to make any announcements? Okay, councillor. Chief officer announcements. Are there any announcements from chief officer?
Thank you very much. It's just to let members of OSMB aware that we're celebrating Carers Day today. There is a bit of a display on in the quad, and we would encourage people to pop in and have a look. Really good opportunity to celebrate the work of our carers. Thank you.
Andrew, any announcements? No, okay. Emily, are there any considerations of call-ins?
None received, Chairman.
Are there any consideration of councillor calls for action?
None received, Chairman.
Right, on to the main body of the agenda, which is item seven, Corporate Plan Success Framework 2022/23 Quarter Two. The item is for pre-decision scrutiny. Prior to the decision by the executive on the 6th of December, I would like to invite Caroline Jackson, Head of Corporate Performance, to present the report. We also have Andrew McLean, Assistant Director, Corporate Transformation Programs and Performance, and Andy Goodson, Executive Director for Place, in attendance in the council chamber and via Teams to help answer any questions. Over to you, Caroline.
Thank you, Chair. So page 15 in your pack is the start of the report, which outlines the performance of the delivery of our priorities outlined in the corporate plan as at quarter two, so the end of September. It shows the performance of also one OSMB specific measure, for which we have reported, which is PI 101, which is the Vinci Facilities Partnership Limited Contract, which you'll be familiar from previous reporting. We have actually seen an improvement in that reporting on quarter one, with 95.3% performance in the second quarter against a target of 75%, so a positive picture in relation to our property contract. In terms of the overall corporate plan, that's from page 19 onwards, you'll recall from previous reports that we have two ways of reporting performance against our corporate plan. Firstly, through our activities, so those things that we deliver that underpin the delivery of our corporate plan, and also from some key performance indicators. Full details of all the activities can be found, and KPIs can be found on the council's website, and a full list of the activities is also included in this report as Appendix A on page 45. So in terms of the activities that we're able to report in quarter two, there are 39 activities, and we're pleased to report that all of those activities are progressing as planned, which is a really positive picture, given some of the challenges obviously being faced by many services across the council. I say full details of that are included in Appendix A. So there's nothing specific that I'm going to highlight in relation to activities. In terms of key performance indicators, there are 22 performance indicators that we're reporting in quarter two, where we've set an ambition or a target. So we're able to say whether they are in line with their target, or whether they are exceeding, or whether they're not performing within the target tolerance. I'm pleased to report that 73% of those KPIs are either exceeding or achieving their target, which is actually a 3% increase on quarter one. Again, a really positive picture, given some of, you know, those targets are challenging, and obviously are also in the context of a challenging environment. The four KPIs that are exceeding their targets, so they are represented by gold star in the report, three of those we were previously exceeding in quarter one, that's the percentage of household waste to landfill, our customer level of satisfaction, and voluntary and community groups actively supported in Lincolnshire. There is one measure that wasn't exceeding in quarter one, but is now in quarter two, and that's household waste collected. So really positive picture to see that households are minimizing the amount of waste being collected and being disposed of in line with our waste strategy objectives. So really positive picture around household waste collection. In terms of the 12 key performance indicators that are achieving their target, so represented by a green tick within the report, eight of those 12 measures were reported as achieving their target in quarter one. Those eight measures were the percentage of our 16 and 17-year-olds who are not in education, employment or training, the rate of children in care, the percentage of children in care living in a family environment, the percentage of our facilities rated good or outstanding by the CQC, the percentage of working-aged adults living in the community, the percentage of older adults living in the community, the percentage of people remain home after 91 days after discharge from hospital, and our percentage of superfast broadband coverage in residential and business premises. So those eight measures have continued to achieve their target. We do have three new key performance indicators in quarter two that are now exceeding, now achieving their target. A new measure that we've included, we were keen to include measures around our fire and safety service, and performance indicator 62 is performing very well, which is the percentage of identified high and medium-risk business premises that have had an inspection under the fire safety order. So positive to see that is achieving its target. We also are achieving our target in relation to eligible two-year-olds who are in seat of their early years entitlement. Again, good to see that our children, our young children are accessing the provision that's available to them. And also the percentage of children with education, health and care plans in mainstream settings. We've aligned this with national measures, so we've got benchmarking data. So this is an annually reported measure from our school census data, and obviously we benchmark this against other local authorities, so where appropriate that children are actually in a mainstream setting. There are six measures within the reporting of quarter two that where we're not achieving our target. Four of these were reported as not achieving their target in quarter one, and also now carry forward into quarter two, so have remained not achieving their target. Two of those relate to our recycling. Our recycling rate, which is a national, a new national formula, and also recycling at county council-owned household waste. In terms of recycling, obviously the paper and card bin collection rollout has been implemented in three out of our seven districts, so as that rolls out further, we anticipate seeing improvements in that performance. In terms of our household recycling centres, we are actually seeing less waste presented at these sites, which actually demonstrates that households are disposing of less waste, which is often attributed to weather conditions, if people aren't, if there's not gardening waste and material. And there's also been some changes in the way that wood is now classified in terms of some of the recyclable elements. And also we've seen a big increase in demand for wood through power stations and also the recycling market, and I'm sure Andy can give further information on all that in the end if needed. We've also seen the percentage of contacts that we received through the customer service centre resolved through early resolution is still not achieving our target. We're continuing to see a rise in demand at the customer service centre. September, we always see that rise in demand around children returning to school and specific queries relating to their transport, and we've seen that again this year. So we're seeing, continuing to see it high volumes. We're probably starting to believe that is our new normal, but we are continuing to work with areas specifically around highway repairs, and also queries around children with education, health and care plans, where we are putting in that additional capacity and focus around early resolution. Our sickness absence rate per full-time employer, employment, sorry, has seen a small reduction from quarter two, from quarter one to quarter two, but we're still not within our target of 7.5 days per FTE. However, what we have been able to do is further analysis to, if we took out Covid absence, we would actually be within our target range. So still seeing obviously the impact of Covid on our sickness absence. New measures that aren't performing in quarter two, so those that we haven't previously reported, are both in relation to Ofsted judgements of our schools. So the percentage of schools that are judged good or outstanding isn't within our target, and similarly the pupils, the percentage of pupils in good or outstanding schools. We have seen, you know, a drop in performance. I can give a verbal update to clarify that it's actually three secondary schools and one primary academy, three secondary and one primary academies, that during the quarter two publication period dropped below good or outstanding. There obviously is support in place with required improvement schools, and we've had some positive inspection outcomes in a number of our small maintained schools, which continues to give really good quality education for our young children. There are also, you'll remember, contextual key performance indicators, so they're measures that we bring into our corporate plan reporting, but we don't have a target set. They're there to set the context around services that we deliver, but don't necessarily directly target. We've got four areas that are performing particularly well. We continue to see visitors to heritage attractions increase, and are actually above other comparators around the country. Had some really exciting recent attractions within Lincoln and Lincolnshire, and we expect with the Lincoln Christmas market to see that continue to rise during quarter three. Our percentage of people who are unemployed has also seen a reduction, and a really positive impact, given the current environment. We've also put, refined our CO2 emission measures in the corporate plan, so that they are in line with our Green Master Plan and the carbon management strategy. And we've now got PIs 26 and 27, which relates specifically to Lincolnshire County Council CO2 emissions, and then overall Lincolnshire's CO2 emissions, and seen a positive impact of those. There are some measures obviously in quarter two that we can't report, that's usually down to it being annual data, or they are based on national data that hasn't been published in line with normal timescales. They are all listed in section 4.6 and page 41 of the report. I can update that since writing the report, that there has been agreement between the leader of the council and the adult care portfolio holder, that the two measures that we're going to include around adult safeguarding from quarter three onwards will be the adult safeguarding cases supported by an advocate, so ensuring that there is appropriate advocacy support for anyone making, for anyone going through that process, and also that the concluded adult safeguard inquiries, where the desired outcomes were achieved, is also going to be reported. So they will be in your report from quarter three onwards. I'll now hand over for any questions.
Thank you very much, Caroline. Councillor Brookway.
Thank you, I've got in there fast, Chairman. Thank you very much. I think this is a superb report. Thank you ever so much. I cannot imagine how long it took to write. What I found really good about the report is while I was reading and asking questions of myself, the answers were there, so it was a really complete document, so I appreciate that. Just two things I'd like to, oh, one more compliment, you're talking about heritage. One thing I do find is that the staff are superb. There's quite a high skill level in the staff who engage with the public now. They greet you, they smile at you, they engage, but they also know when to step back, and I find that that has enhanced my experience, so I'd like to just put that in there, please. Right, two quick questions. We've got this target of 80% for two-year-olds getting early years entitlement, and I know we've exceeded that, which is great, but I would question a target of 80%, because that always kind of gives permission. What about the other 20%? You know, do we say it's okay if we hit 80%? Well, actually it's not, it needs to be 100%. And I've got a long history of challenging these targets, because they're always constructs. I mean, the target is 100% really, and I just want to put that in there. I do worry about these targets set below the total, because 20% is an awful lot of little children not engaging. But, I mean, well done for going beyond the target. I was wondering, there was something on page 35 about waste. I'm very interested in the way waste has changed, because my district is doing the paper collections, so now my paper bin is full every time, and my recycling bin has got about that much in, so I don't really need a collection about more than once every two months. But I did wonder if the lower presentation was in part because people are buying less. I don't know that it is just that they're presenting their waste differently. Certainly on the social media that I follow, people are buying a lot less, and I wonder if that is so, the same level of waste for what they are buying, but they've just not too as much. So just some thoughts there and a comment about the two-year-olds. But thank you, a wonderful report.
Councillor Dokes.
Thank you very much, Miss Chairman, and yes, thank you for the report. My question actually is related to Jackies probably. Councillor Brookway, forgive me. Yeah, and it was, I was at a scrutiny meeting earlier this week at South Cesterburn District Council, and I've got to say, I'm a bit confused, because the picture seemed to be a bit different there, and I don't know if that was because South Cesterburn's an outlier in these things, and I appreciate that we haven't got the card and paper collections sorted yet. But the report I've got from them actually reads that contrary to what, you know, the picture is at the whole of Lincolnshire, that the weight of recycled material in South Cesterburn collected has actually increased, however, the total amount of waste has increased as well. And that's obviously a matter of concern. We sort of had a discussion around people's change of shopping habits and, you know, and increased card because of internet shopping, et cetera, you know. But I just wondered if we could sort of drill down a bit, and, you know, is South Cesterburn out of sync with the rest of the county? Because it actually says in their report that the increase in total amount of waste collected in South Cesterburn follows the trend across England, which is also seeing a total increase in the total amount of waste from households, and the amount of recycled actually decreasing. So I just wondered if perhaps Lincolnshire's the outlier rather than the South Ca... I don't know, and I just wonder if you could, if there's any way we can drill down, have a little, you know, closer look at that. Thank you.
Over to you, Caroline.
Thank you. I don't know if Andy's on the call, actually, whether he would want to come in on the waste one specifically, and certainly we can go away and have a look at obviously the district level data, because obviously that's not in the report, and look at how that, you know, that constructs and compares and report back, but I'll see if Andy wants to add.
Thank you, Caroline. Thank you, councillor Smith. Yeah, the information that's been presented here is the county-wide level. Obviously, there is the district-by-district data, which I don't have to hand, but that obviously is discussed and considered through the Waste Partnership. If you would like us to bring back a more detailed breakdown of that, or to present that back into the ENE Scrutiny Committee for a bit more of a forensic understanding of that, then that can be done. I think what it does demonstrate is that looking at the waste indicators in isolation can perhaps sort of present a misleading picture, because you need to look at the waste environment in its entirety, in terms of the whole waste streams. And interesting in terms of councillor Brookway's comment, in terms of her paper bin is full, but her recycling bin isn't, other people are sort of reporting that actually over the monthly period, both bins are getting filled. So again, all of our individual behaviours and use patterns of goods and how we create waste ourselves has a bearing on our own individual experiences. But again, we could do more forensic analysis of that, if that would be helpful. And whilst I've got the microphone, just thank you for councillor Brookway in terms of the comments regarding the staff at the visitor attractions, and just to remind members, we have one Visit England Welcome Awards, which reflect very much that perspective of the visitor experience. Thank you.
Councillor Brookway, sorry. May I just slightly come back, if that's okay? Thank you. Thanks for that information. I do, I'm not sure the whole committee would welcome, you know, or would ask for all that extra data. I'd certainly welcome a briefing myself with, you know, given the South Cesterburn perspective. The last thing I would want to just ask was, again, we had a round, we had a discussion around the Right Thing, Right Bin campaign that's going on at the moment. That's a Lincolnshire campaign, I understand, yeah? And I just wondered what impact, you know, you think that's having and how that's working out? Thank you.
Again, if I can respond, that's something that is owned through the Waste Partnership, so all of the districts and the county have signed up to that. Collectively, we are trying to promote that, to try and get that single perspective, single understanding from residents of actually what goes into what individual bins. I would argue that the underlying trends that we're seeing in terms of the recycling rates, that the amount of waste that is coming into the FW reflect well on that working. It's an area where education, training, information is an integral part of the waste service. Experience shows if you drop out of that sort of educational environment, people then revert to other habits and perhaps don't realise and understand the merits and the benefits of actually disposing of their waste in particular ways. As the card and paper trial is showing, it's creating an income stream for us, because we've got a waste product that has a quality and a level of value for recycling. If that is contaminated, that again can only really either go into the FW or into, worst-case scenario, into landfill.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Again, one of the things I kind of thought of was on this Right Thing, Right Bin, which I really welcome the initiative, and, you know, we need consistency across the county to do, you know, otherwise it just causes confusion. But what struck me was, and I don't know what the cost would be, and that would obviously be an implication, was, you know, whilst we talk about education and public and articles, et cetera, in various media, it strikes me that the direct education route would be stickers on bins, and I just wondered if that had been considered and et cetera. Thank you.
Stickers on bins have been used as part and parcel of previous campaigns, trying to give that clarity to people. We try and use different methods, different mechanisms at different times, so that people don't get bored or complacent with the messages that we've got. But stickers are part and parcel of the arsenal of activities that have been used at times in the past, and undoubtedly probably will be used again at some point in the future.
I'll bring in councillor Whittington, she says he can help with your question, councillor Dokes, and then I'll bring in councillor Brooks, because I know he's been waiting a while. Councillor Whittington.
Yes, hi, good morning. Thanks, 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 Mr Chairman, for allowing me to speak. I am here on the call as councillor Hill, Support Councillor, but I also do hold the Waste Services portfolio at South Cesterburn. And I know we discussed these recycling rates for South Cesterburn at our meeting yesterday, and if we are an outlier in comparison to the rest of the county, I'd be interested in trying to find out why, to understand if the behaviour of residents in South Cesterburn is different to the rest of the county. But as Andy said, all these issues are discussed through the Lincolnshire Waste Partnership, and I am one of the SK reps on that. So if you do produce any figures, Andy, could you let me, could you send, could you provide me with a copy of them as well? Thanks.
Certainly councillor Whittington.
Councillor Brooks.
Thank you, Chairman. I was looking on page 25, percentage of household waste to landfill, and it just prompted a query in my mind about how energy from waste is categorised, so the, all the waste that goes to energy from waste, how is that classified? Because that doesn't seem to appear in results anywhere, anywhere. The other one was the, on page 34, recycling rate, there's a new national formula, and I wondered how that differed from the old formula, because there seems to be quite a drop in quarter one from previous quarters, and I just wondered what causes that, how does a new formula compare with the old formula? The other observation I make is that councillor Brookway's point about household waste results, people are, people do buy less when times get hard. I know previously, previous years, we found that when there's a downturn in the economy, there is seems to be a downturn in the amount of stuff that goes to household waste collection points, so I think that's probably correct, what councillor Brookway's saying. Thank you.
Either Andy or yourself, Caroline, don't mind which.
I imagine Caroline will defer to me again. So in terms of the formula, again, different categories of waste are categorised differently at different times, and in the context of that, if you look on, I think it's on page 35, wood is now classed as recoverable materials, not recyclable materials, so there's subtle differences about how the government reconsider in the context of our strategy that we've got across Lincolnshire in terms of what is reused, recyclable, or considered as waste. So there's subtle differences, which then have a bearing in terms of how the headline figures actually play out. In terms of the waste that goes to the energy from waste plant, the fact that our figure is low going to landfill is a positive reflection, and the majority of our waste goes through the FW, so there isn't a need to necessarily report that separately or differently. If our landfill figure was going up, that would imply that either we were creating more waste and therefore couldn't dispose of it through the FW, or for other reasons, we're not managing to dispose of it in an effective way through the FW. One thing to note is the FW does largely work at capacity, so in the context of the creation of waste, if across the county we had a greater presentation of waste, that would run the risk of us actually having a greater would run the risk of us actually having a greater landfill figure because we wouldn't necessarily be able to push more waste through the energy from waste plant.
Yeah, thank you Chairman, thanks.
Just before I bring in councillor Carrington, on, on your point councillor Brooks, a report further on in the agenda actually backs that up. It goes into some detail and basically consumer spending is that it's, has fallen again and it's, as you've said, it's due to external factors which is possibly why there's, there's less waste. Councillor Carrington.
Thank you Chairman, yes, it's a bit of a broken record, I'm, I'm, I'm back on to PI 37 on page 34. Just to say for members' benefit, we did discuss this at the last Environment and Economy Scrutiny Committee and what we asked for and I'm sure is being prepared is some more granular data. Because when you start digging into it, there are variations between the districts which you might expect, but there are also variations within the national picture. I think what the committee was particularly keen to ensure was that if there were any changes in behaviour which we could positively influence, then we would be in a position to drive that recycling rate up. Because the, the chart on page 34 is a little concerning in the sense that the target remains static. I appreciate there may be differences in the way we measure it, but we have this very slow drift in the wrong direction in terms of recycling rate. And further concern would be with three districts now operating paper and card collection and certainly my own district of North Castran, that has been phenomenally successful, very, very pure flows, very, very full bins. Is that masking a more serious decline elsewhere? So we have looked for that more granular data, it may be appropriate to bring it to this committee as well. But the important thing that we felt in our meeting was that we should use that data in order to be able to help our residents change behaviours if that was what was appropriate. Thank you Chair.
Do either yourself Caroline or Ian want to come back on, Andy even, sorry, want to come back on that?
Yeah, that's why I referenced earlier whether there is the further information either to come back to this committee or to enhance the information that's already even been asked for through the Environment, Economy and Environment Scrutiny Committee. I would again emphasise that this is the sort of data and information that is discussed and considered through the Waste Partnership as well. And therefore each of the partners on the Waste Partnership has an ability to influence, address this agenda and try and work more collaboratively across the whole of the county to look at waste in its entirety rather than split between the district and the county as collection and disposal authorities. If we work more effectively as one within the Waste Partnership and explore ways of doing things on a consistent pattern, again, we run, we, we avoid the risk of actually having, to use the term that was used before, outliers or behaviour in one part of the county that doesn't match the overall expectations. So that again is something that we can push through the Waste Partnership.
Councillor Hill. Yeah, just on the, this argument about recycling, I think Andy's dead right, so the figure to look for is percentage going to landfill, which in Lincolnshire is, can't remember the figure, 2% or something? And unfortunately, these are government classifications which, to be blunt, I think elements of civil servants have been captured by the more fanatical ends of the green movement because in my simple mind, if something goes to the energy from waste plant, that is recycling because what happens of course, it becomes electricity, which we happen to be short of, and indeed there's also the potential for, for capturing the, the heat which comes out of it as well. So I, I think getting very excited about in a particular area, whether it's how much is recycled, how much is, is going to, to be created, creating electricity is a bit of a, bit of a rabbit war and you probably don't need to go down. And, and I think it's just a question of a bit of common sense because frankly, if you've got a bit of something, a little bit of something which can be recycled, say in Scotland or abroad, you've got to remember the cost of getting it there, you've got to remember that recycling itself is not a carbon neutral exercise because all that, so you probably find that some bits of stuff which is considered recyclable is probably carbon negative and probably the better, more sensible thing to do would be to put it to the energy from waste plant and then create electricity out of it. But I think the government at the moment doesn't seem to want to recognise energy from waste as a, as a what they would regard as the way of the future, but I think the experience in Lincolnshire and elsewhere does demonstrate i- it is a very sensible way of doing it. And of course, if you recycle or you do anything, you are creating, you are creating CO2, you're creating methane, whatever you do. So I, I think sometimes common sense disappears in this. So I would advise people not to get too obsessed about particular rates of recycling, just look at that landfill figure and that tells you probably all you need to know. In terms of communicating messages, we do a lot of work in the Waste Partnership in terms of the communications area, we do a lot of work trying to get that message out. It is quite difficult when you have seven different waste collection authorities because by their nature they'll do it differently, all of them. So what we've tried to do in the past is keep it simple and just try and advise people what not to put in, in their, their certain bins. So people have got five things or whatever, I know all the districts try and do, because it gets very confusing, people don't, you know, quite understand sometimes what they can recycle, what they can't and all the rest. So some simple messages and there have been stickers and chats, but again, at the end of the day, that is a matter for the individual waste collection authority because they, they will want to do it their way. But we do try and keep it simple and do that and I think the card and the paper has been very successful in simplifying it and then people more clearly understand what is valuable to recycle and what is, what is not. Thank you.
Councillor Kendrick.
Thank you Chairman. Unsurprisingly, of course, my eye was caught by the stats on percentage of schools that are judged good or outstanding and obviously the recent Ofsted report which I think has attracted some controversy. I haven't got the, the details in front of me, but I, I would like to think, for example, I understand that safeguarding policies was one of the issues and I'd like to think that that was actually more of a case of not ticking the right box or not having the most up-to-date policy in place rather than the standard and quality of teaching within our schools where they have adjudged them to be below that standard. So I, I would hope that that would be the case rather than actually any sort of dramatic decline. And also the stats are such that with just four schools and the number of children, it just skews the figures a bit. So just that's all I'd like to say on that. Thanks Chairman.
Two things like.
Yeah, so thank you very much, thank you councillor Kendrick. So it is a bit of a mix in terms of those schools around the quality of teaching and learning and some of the safeguarding issues. In terms of the safeguarding issues, although again, not specific to all of them, but the sort of general, general issue tended to be around the sort of quality assurance of children who are educated off-site. So if I just try and explain that in a little more detail, so for some students, they may need a bit more of a mix of a curriculum than what the school can provide on their own and they tend to work with alternative providers for the, for the, the young person to have a mixed timetable. So three days a week in a traditional school and then two days in an alternative provision site. And in a number of cases, the quality assurance of the third party, the alternative provider was the safeguarding issue rather than anything particular around abuse. So I think it is around the, the quality assurance process. Notwithstanding that though, there was some issues in terms of quality of teaching and learning in some of the inspection reports as well, which clearly we're following up with the Regional Schools Commissioner.
Thanks very much for the clarification on that, appreciate that, thanks.
Well, I have a question or two. Firstly, I'd like to say it's, it's commendable to, to officers and everybody involved in it that actually the measures we have direct control over, we're either meeting or exceeding the targets that we set ourselves, which means that people are working very hard in very difficult circumstances. Andy, you may be able to answer me this question because it relates to, to wood. How is it sort of changing classification, what sort of impact does it have? Because as I'm sure you'll know, it's, as a resource in general, it's quite in demand and it's quite expensive now to even get hold of. So what impact, if any, is it, is it having on our, our recycle rates?
I don't know the detailed answer to that councillor Smith, but can get it back to you, but it's in the context of, rather than the wood automatically being recycled, it is now looked at in the context of the opportunity for elements of that to be reused. So if you visit the HWRC sites, obviously the way that we actually operate those sites is that we try and make sure that good, good quality waste is taken out of just being dumped into the skips and is then found to actually go to a different supplier. So it's in that context that, that the presentation of wood is probably still taking place, it's how we are then utilising it and disposing of it is, it has changed.
Thank you for that. Not seeing any, any other member wanting to ask a question. So the actions required of the board are as follows: we are invited to consider the attached report to determine whether the board supports the recommendation to the executive as set out in the report, to agree any additional comments to be passed on to the executive into the relations of this item, which we have most certainly done, and to review and comment on the performance information that is within the remit of the board and highlight any further recommendations and actions for consideration. The recommendation, that's right, so those in favour of the recommendation please show those against and any abstentions, so that's not such unanimous. Item eight is the draft infrastructure funding statement. This item is for pre-decision scrutiny prior to a decision by the leader of the council between the 5th and 9th of December. I would like to invite Brandon Gallagher, Principal Planning Officer, Infrastructure to present the report. We also have Vanessa Strange, Head of Infrastructure Investment in attendance to stay up and answer any questions. Over to you Brandon.
Thank you Chair. And as you've said, this is for consultation with the board and so you have a, a very short report with you that explains that. And you also have the leader's report which is a bit more detailed. And then finally you have in front of you the IFS itself, IFS standing for Infrastructure Funding Statement. You'd probably be very familiar with the format of the IFS, having seen previous year's reports, it's an annual requirement that we do this, a legal requirement that we do it annually and this is the third such report. So the IFS itself has three sort of mandatory sections. One which requires us to state how we intend to spend SIL or Community Infrastructure Levy going forward. Second, the SIL report which looks at the financial year 2021, 2022. And third, the section 106 report which looks at the same financial year. And within the regulations, there's a requirement for us to answer several questions against each of those parts of the report, parts of the statement. So some of the language might seem strange that's in there in the IFS, but that's just because it's, it's taken straight from the regulations and, and, and it's sort of an answer to their, their questions, they being the government. The section 106 report also includes optional data around highways agreements. And so I'm happy to have any questions on this, but I hope you'll see it's rather par for the course and, and similar to previous years. Thank you.
I've got a few points if that, that's all right. You may not be able to answer the first one which is, because I know it's referenced in your report, which is, do we have an update on any potential changes to developer contributions? That's the first question. The second is, could officers clarify on page five of the IFS, it states the following: inshore LCC did not collect any SIL for the relevant year and is unlikely in future. I am assuming that's in its remit or that's as a collection authority rather than actually using any SIL. But am I correct in that assertion that that statement is on the basis of LCT actually being a collection authority rather than its use of SIL? Thank you.
I'll take the second point first if I can, I think that's a simple one, yes. The first point's a bit less easy to, to, to answer. What I can say is I'll say a little bit more about how the potential infrastructure levy features in the levelling up bill. You possibly have seen in the press that it would become a mandatory levy and that this proposed infrastructure levy would be mandatory and it would be, it would be based on the value of development at completion rather than the current status, which is where it's, it's just set on a per square metre basis and by, by each district council. And that sort of explains the second point as well, that it's, it's the district councils who are the collecting authority, it's them who set it on floor space, so it's, it's the kind of development that comes before a, a district council in their remit rather than our remit as a Minerals and Waste Authority.
Thank you very much for that. Councillor Marple.
Morning, thanks Chairman. In relation to community infrastructure levy, I mean, for me, I feel that we miss a trick or you're certainly missing tricks in my area. I mean, pathways, cycleways, and I, and I call these infrastructure levies that actually the community desperately needs. We build loads of new houses in some of my large villages and yet absolutely make a mess of how the kids get to school and how they connect through to that and we've missed all the links, the planning's gone through. That's one area. The other area is when we get large infrastructure projects like offshore wind turbines and they, and we use our highways that the companies do to go up and down shifting thousands of tonnes of hardcore etc and equipment and then our highways are left damaged. And actually, instead of going where the company that's done all the damages should be responsible, we end up as the taxpayer picking up the bill and trying to fund these highways where we haven't, we struggle with finance anyway and actually we shouldn't be the one that's funding large infrastructure projects that have damaged our own infrastructure. And, and when I look on the list, you know, I welcome to see so many places, but in some areas, I feel that my area is certainly missed out. Now whether that's rurality and it's not on the larger communities, but certainly we need to up our game on getting better use of infrastructure levy, on sometimes what I call the community things. A school's all right, a community, but a lot of people don't necessarily use a school. But often a lot of people are using footpaths and cycleways and highways which are affected. Thank you.
Do you want to come back to all but?
I think I might respond to some of that if that's okay. So members will recall that we had a scrutiny panel looked at some of these wider planning issues a couple of years ago and reported back to our assembly on that and does so regularly. And one of the things that we've tried to improve as officers is the engagement with members about planning applications as they come forward. And our development management team work really hard now to make sure that members get an opportunity to make comments about those sorts of needs for particularly for their, their villages, their patch in terms of paths and, and improvements that are required. We can put those forwards and we now publish those comments that we send to district councils. Of course, the challenge remains as to whether those comments are then taken through to a planning stage with our district councils. But I, I hope that we have seen an improvement in some of that in recent years, at least the conversations that happen and we are also doing ward talks with members as well to understand the, the needs in their community more. Conscious that in terms of the, the wider infrastructure piece as well, we're obviously subject to a lot of interest for, for large infrastructure projects at the moment and there is an active piece of work going on about how we can make sure that we have benefit or at least less negative impacts from some of those if they do come forward. So it is something that we are working on as, as officers. I hope that helps.
Yeah, you wish to come back councillor Marple.
Thank you. An area that you've sort of just said about connecting with members, great. Actually, the area that you don't connect with is I think the parish councils. And having met with highways and the parish council, this was where the missing link all happened. And it's, and the problem is, is if you don't watch it, the parish council doesn't get notified until the planning comes through, by which time it's too late to actually start to re-rectify something because in effect, you're then in a two months on a short planning or a four months technically on a longer term planning minimum. And actually what then happens is you end up with, there's no time left to react. And actually, what then happens is you end up with, there's no time left to react. And often, some of these more, some parish councils only meet monthly. So if the application for planning has gone in at the beginning or the just after the parish councils met, you've got a lapse. And actually, it's about engaging with them. They know what they want in their community. We endorse and work with them, but they also know. And actually, they're a fundamental part of actually that engagement process, which needs to happen a lot earlier than when the planning application lands at the desk. You guys know when they're coming. Work with the local parish councils to draft up solutions to what the community want. Be my thing.
Do either of you wish to respond to that?
I think we'll take the the points on board and happy to come back to councillor Marple outside the meeting with some thoughts.
councillor Carrington.
Thanks very much, Chair. Having some personal involvement in the planning system, I can say from personal experience that our officers in the section of the highways and SUDS team who deal with local planning authorities have seriously upped their game in the last few years. And the 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 quality of that contact is very high and it is now working on a much more proactive rather than reactive basis than it used to. But I do have a question for officers about the SIL. At the moment, of course, parts of the county, usually those who are more confident that they have higher land values impose a SIL. Other parts of the county, usually those with perhaps lower land values, aren't imposing a SIL. Does do officers think that it is likely that the suggestion that a mandatory SIL will be imposed will go through? And if so, will that be a net benefit to all parts of Lincolnshire or will there be issues? Thank you.
So yes, I think you've hit the nail on the head. There are issues around viability, particularly with with the four districts that haven't brought forward SIL, albeit there's probably one that you would say could have probably afforded it. I think there's quite a few, however, who have known that this change is coming. The government for a long time have said that it's going to amend section 106 and SIL. And I think that's put inertia into a lot of authorities, not just here but across the country, understandably. We don't know if it's definitely going to occur that we will get the infrastructure levy. It's in the levelling up bill as it is today, but that's got to get through Parliament. Might not get through Parliament in this Parliament, and it will require secondary legislation before we can see it come into fruition. So that might not happen within this Parliament either. If I was a betting man, I don't know that I would place a bet on a a new government running with it, whether that's a government of this colour or a government of of the next colour or whatever it is. But there's a lot of uncertainties around that, as you can see at the national level. So it's difficult to know for sure how it's going to affect us as Lincolnshire. But I think, again, if I was a betting man, I would actually put some money on it being an increase for Lincolnshire rather than us seeing less money out of it as a as a whole, because for the reasons you've explained, there's already four districts that don't have SIL but would have the infrastructure levy.
councillor Dilks.
I just wanted to support councillor Marple's comments. I just think he's really got something. I think he's absolutely spot on there. I'm for some years been involved with the planning at South Cessavon and experienced all of those things that you said councillor Marple. It was highlighted this morning. We had a a particular application a couple of years ago in what I'd call a split village, village of Morton, just north of Bourne, on the A15, a village, you know, that's half on one side, half on the other. These houses were on the opposite side to where the primary school was. I was very concerned about kids crossing the main road and stood on a grass verge when we did the site visit. And, you know, Arctic lorries thundered through at quite fast speeds. Of course, it went through highways, sort of didn't have an objection and it was okay and everything. And I was I was still really worried. This morning, as I was driving here, and and the justification that it was okay was, oh, there's an island in the middle of the road. So, you know, you can cross to the island and then to the other side. As I drove through Morton this morning, I was just, my heart stood still when I saw a little boy on a bicycle on that island, sort of wondering whether to go and not go. And you could see him and he thought, no, please don't. And there was an Arctic thundering towards us. He didn't go, you know, but I just thought, my goodness, you know, that is so wrong. That needs better protect, you know, that's just one example, I realise, and it's an anecdote. But I just think you're so right. We don't get involved, and that's the system really. We we don't involve local representation, probably through ourselves as, you know, district and county councillors, but also particularly, I don't think we listen enough to parish councils, the people who know what's going on in their ward, in their area. Thank you.
councillor Hill.
Perhaps I can help because the 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 development that councillor Dilks refers to is actually within my division. So it's certainly not correct to say there was no engagement and there was no sort of listen, there wasn't any notice taken of the the local parish council and the locals as well. And it was a quite controversial and combined with a co-op which is also there. So there was a lot of discussion about this. It was quite unpopular, especially as the the district council chose to put a lot of their social housing allocation on that particular site, which again, wasn't very helpful. So I I think there was a lot of opposition to it, but it was it was decided to grant it permission. Highways had no legitimate reason to refuse permission. I think sometimes people in in district councils don't understand that we are quite constrained about the reasons we can object. And if we object on grounds which are considered unreasonable, then of course, if it goes to appeal, we will be we will be up for the cost. And indeed, a few years ago, the government actually made it even harder for county council highways to object. The good news is in that particular scheme, so I can reassure councillor, because I think it is an issue, there's a small island there, because of further developments on Sue Woolley's side of the road, actually, there will now be a pedestrian facility at that that place. And the speed limit has now been reduced from 40 to 30. So some progress has been made and, you know, I think we can improve it as well. But it is, it's quite a complicated and I think all officers, whether it be county council or district council, people that councillors don't realise how little little flexibility they have. And if you object to things, you've got to be very careful that they are, it will stand up against appeal and objection.
I have a a couple of points and they follow on from that councillor. Having been an ex district councillor, I'm planning for four years and done over 30 appeals. I have immense sympathy with highways colleagues because the MPPF is very clear, the impact has to be demonstrable. And unfortunately, how they calculate that impact, we will never hit that in Lincolnshire. I'll be, if we hit that in Lincolnshire, you're going to be very lucky. That's a simple factor of life. There is a wider planning issue, as councillor Marple alluded to, around the infrastructure issue and councillor Booter ought to be acutely aware of that problem. That's a wider planning issue because it's under the National Significant Infrastructure Projects Protocol, basically, which we have very little influence over as a body at Lincolnshire or districts. We basically give a steer and then the planning inspector will then say yea or nay. This is an issue that's been raised in Parliament by Sir Edward and I'm sure other MPs as well say, this is, that system is not acceptable. Actually, it's those that live locally that know their area that actually should make the decision because that's what we're here for. Bran's already alluded to the possible change in in SIL, but there is murmurings of wider planning changes. What they will be, I don't know. I don't think the minister, which I believe is the right honourable Michael Gove, knows exactly what those changes will be at the moment. But it's, I think, a case of watch this space and all we can do as councillors, when we see things that we think are wrong, our lobby, our MPs and our betters, and try and get change that way. Because we're very hand tied through the the MPPF as it stands, unfortunately, but we are where we are. If no members have any further questions or, yeah, please, yeah, feel free councillor Booter.
Thank you, Chair. It was just on councillor Marple's comment about HGVs, deliveries, major infrastructure using our highways. There is a mechanism that we can claw back money against these projects, isn't there? Because certainly, in my area, with the potential of the solar farms and 200, 300 HGVs a day going on our roads to these areas, it was a concern. And highways have confirmed that we would, if we could prove that it was directly linked to these deliveries, that we could actually claw back some money from from these developments.
Thank you. That's very useful information. I'll I'll go a bit further. I don't know how other members feel. I think it'd be very helpful if we had some form of briefing, doesn't have to be paid, but some form of briefing, so that we know how that system works, so that for yourself, obviously, and for for any of us in in future, if something like that comes up, we can say to our parish councils and our residents, well, this is how the system works, this is what we've got to prove, this is what we've got to do. Because I wasn't aware of that and I, as I've just said, I was on plane for a very long time at West Lindsay and I wasn't aware of such systems. So I think that'd be very helpful. Yep, councillor Marple.
Yes, I mean, it's good news and, you know, this is, it's not quite, it's not really that difficult. You take a video of the road before the work starts and you take one after the work starts and actually that's your proof. The point really is just being proactive and actually aware that these projects are happening and actually get the claws within the system to actually the right people to fund. My other bit really was just not so much, it's it's about the community infrastructure levy, it's just about engaging with the parish councils to be aware of actually what the local need is and actually tie it in. Often, the developers are quite happy, but if they don't know about it, they can't, it's just giving the opportunity to actually get those local issues paid for without then we're all trying to do it hindsight, where it was easy when the cash was available on the big projects, that's all. Thank you.
Andy, you wish to make a comment?
Thank you councillor Smith. I mean, some of the points I was going to make have actually been picked upon. But I would highlight again, this is one of the areas where in the context of the role of how the planning system operates, it's the district council that are predominantly the decision-making body. There are times where our advice isn't taken on board for a variety of reasons. And then other priorities are looked at over and above the things that we might have identified. Just to clarify one or two points as well, we are not necessarily aware well in advance of some of the schemes that come forward. The first we might know about it is when a planning application lands on our desk as well as the the district authorities, the planning authority, not all developer is engaged in advance. So we're up against the clock in the same way that councillor Marple recognises that some of the parishes are. The parishes, obviously, are all, should all be getting direct consultation from the district councillors, the planning authorities as well, so should have another route to actually get their views and opinions actually raised. As councillor Hill knows from a couple of particular examples, it's important that the parish councils do that in a timely fashion so it can form part and parcel of the debate and discussion that's appropriate. Vanessa did reference earlier the the way that we actually notify councillors. I'd have to say, the take up of that notification, there is a limited level of reaction and response. So whilst I'm hearing the comments about we perhaps don't necessarily respond with the local views, the local expectations, there are a limited number of members that actually utilise that service and actually come back to our offices and give us the, dare I say, the ammunition to have those conversations with the developers. So there is an opportunity there to actually encourage some of the, some of your colleagues to actually be more proactive in how they actually engage with our team. As councillor Carrington says, I I think we operate in a much different way than we did in previous years and I'm grateful that that's been acknowledged. Just to answer specifically councillor Carrington's question, again, recognising his experience in the planning system, dare I say councillor Carrington, I'm cynical of the likelihood of the current proposals in the levelling up bill going forward as they are currently proposed. Through my career as a planning officer, there have been numerous attempts by governments of different persuasions to change the section 106 SIL legislation. And dare I say, the development industry tends to win out in the context of ultimately how that is played through. I'm not holding my breath in terms of the changes that may actually occur. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, Andy. And it's, I certainly share the sentiment on that front, for better or worse, unfortunately. Seeing there are no other question, nobody wishing to ask a question, the overview and scrutiny management board is invited to consider the attached report and determine whether the board supports the recommendation to the leader of the council as set out in the report and agree any additional comments to be passed to the leader, who's obviously here and has heard them. So can I have a proposal in second that we accept the report and the recommendations, councillor Carrington and councillor Dilks? Thank you. All those in favour, please show. Any against and any abstentions seeing none? Thank you. We move to item nine, which is the Treasury Management Performance 2223 quarter to to the 30th of September 2022. This report sets out the Treasury Management activities and performance quarter to the 2022, 2023 to September 30th, 2022. I would like to invite Karen Tonig, Treasury Manager, to present the report. We also have Sue Maycock, Strategic Finance Lead, corporate in attendance to help answer any questions. Over to you, Karen.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everyone. This is the quarter two update report for Treasury Management detailing the activity to the 30th of September and comparing this to the Treasury Management Strategy approved by the Executive Council of Resources on the 14th of March of this year. As usual, the report is divided into three main areas, namely the economy and interest rates, investments and borrowing. So starting with the economy and interest rates, once again, this report, I'm afraid, comments on activity to the 30th of September. But as as you know, there's been events in the economy and interest rates have moved extensively from this time with changes of Prime Minister and Cabinet to reversal of fiscal policies introduced by predecessors and an autumn statement that we've had. So apologies that it's, it will be out of date somewhat. So I will comment on activities since that, since that time today. Inflation is still riding high, reaching 11.1% in October. And the MPC have increased base rate in their last eight meetings in a row in an attempt to control this and bring it down. The the graph on page 85 of your pack shows the movement of rates since the start of the year to the time of writing the report. And it shows the upward path of base rate, which reached 2.25% at the end of September. And in fact, base was subsequently increased again on the 3rd of November to 3% with the Bank of England forecasting further increases. It felt to reach 4.85% to bring inflation down to to the target level. Markets in in fact were pricing the peak of of base to reach 5.25% in September at the time of the the fiscal loosening policies were announced. So you can see that this has come down somewhat since then with the new proposals announced in the autumn statement. The the graph also shows that long-term rates relevant to borrowing have increased over the period and in fact spiked in in September at the time of of the announcement of the of the fiscal policies. But has since come back down again to levels prior to the September increases. And in fact, today, 350-year borrowing rate is is at 3.69, so it's it's come down extensively. Lincoln have not altered their interest rate forecast since the end of September, which is shown at the bottom of of the appendix on page 85. But this this does show that they they expect, they expected rates to fall back down again to by 2025 as inflation is brought into control. The Bank of England did announce, however, at their meeting, their last meeting, that they thought the UK was already in recession and that they expected this to last for a prolonged period of up to two years. And and they face a hard navigation of a difficult balancing act, should I say, of reducing this inflation and without detriment to growth. But I would say that this is, this is a global problem. It's not just a UK problem, with most countries in the world experiencing the same problem. in the world experiencing the same problem. So I'll move to investments. Appendix B on page 91 of your pack summarised the investment position and performance at 30th of September. But I would say a revised appendix was issued to to members earlier this week. That included the LINK benchmarking analysis that wasn't available at the time of writing the report. So hopefully, you've got a copy of that. The graph on that appendix shows that investment balances have fluctuated under the 300 million level throughout the period, and at the end of September was just over 277 million. At the same time, the graph shows that interest yield has increased over the same period since the start of the year, the annualised rate being just over 1% for the period to 30th of September. This is still, unfortunately, under the new Sonia benchmark for the same period, and due to the rapid increase in the market rates that we've experienced, and the time lag of our existing investments held, struggling to keep up with this rapid increase. On a more positive note, though, you'll see that the LINK benchmarking results show that LCC returns exceed those of the benchmarking group comparators by some margin, and in excess of the risk band banding return. And this is due in some part to lengthening the weighted average maturity of the fund, taking advantage of locking in to investments in excess of 5% during September, in the midst of the market upheaval at the time. I'd just like to report that no lending to counterparties exceeded limits at the end of September, and there was no changes to the annual investment strategy that sets the council's risk appetite. But it's worth noting that as a result of the market upheaval experienced in in September, the UK's financial standing was assessed by credit rating agencies, and they have, they did two out, two out of three credit rating agencies have put the UK sovereign rating, which is currently double A minus, on a negative outlook. So if downgraded from this level, that would put the UK sovereign rating below our minimum level outlined in our current annual investment strategy. Due to the reversal of the policies and the market and the market return to stability, it's not thought, however, that this downgrade will be likely now. But for the 2023 strategy, Treasury Management Strategy, to overcome this potential issue in the future, it's proposed to exclude the UK from the minimum sovereign limit. The lending list at the end of September and the full list of investments held at this time can be seen as usual in appendix C and D on page 93 and 97, respectively. So finally, moving to borrowing, the key points to note on borrowing really are, after adjustments to internal borrowing and rephasing of the capital programme, the borrowing requirement for the for the financial year is now nil. And as such, no external borrowing has been taken this year, and none is now expected to be taken to the rest of the year. And this means the expected level of external borrowing at 31st of March will be 467.8 million, costing an average of 3.725%. Details can be seen of the borrowing position in appendix F on page 109 of your pack. The decision not to take any external borrowing during the year is in line with the new treasury indicator known as the debt liability benchmark. And I've included this this benchmark in a new appendix, appendix E, on page 107. This indicator, as you can see, is showing that the in 2022, 23, we are in excess of this debt liability benchmark, and hence no borrowing is required to meet the required level of cash to meet acceptable liquidity levels. So on a final note, I'd just like to report that no temporary borrowing has been undertaken during the period, no debt rescheduling has been undertaken, and there were no breaches of prudential limits. So that's it. I'm just happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Councillor Brockway.
I always cringe when I'm going to ask a question on a financial paper. Thank you ever so much for this. I really appreciate the explanations that you put in about the bigger financial situation as well. It's very educative. I always feel that I go away educated by your reports. It's great. Can I ask a question about the liability benchmark, please? It looks to me, with my understanding, that we're moving very much in the right direction there with the debts decreasing. Am I right there? Page 107? Yeah. So can I ask, obviously, it's a broad question, could you, that is a very difficult thing to achieve in the current economic climate. Could you just give me a little bit of insight into the processes you're using to achieve what you've got there, please?
Yep. The the graph shows that the bars on the graph chart are our outstanding maturity debt position year on year, right out to when they fall out completely. So that demonstrates how much debt we will have outstanding per year. And the debt liability benchmark is the red line. And that that bench, that level represents the amount of CFR less our predicted investment liquidity level that we've set, that we require for liquidity. So when you take one from the other, it represents how much you would need to borrow to maintain that suitable level of of cash liquidity going forward. It's a new approach to determining how much to borrow, which was introduced in the SIF code, which is going to be applicable from next year onwards. But it's sort of, instead of looking at your borrowing requirement and just borrowing to meet that level, it's saying, look at your level of cash, and instead, and do you really need to borrow that that money? And can you bring your cash down to a reasonable level for liquidity, and at the same time, not having to borrow and take on the debt for the future years? So that debt in the bar there is our existing debt that we've already taken, and you can see that falling falling out over the years to come. So you can see for this year that the existing debt for 2223 is above the red line. And so that's indicating that our cash is at a suitable level, that we don't need to take any borrowing to meet the capital programme financing for this year, and still maintain that that level of liquidity that we have. In future years, you see where the bar bar graph is underneath that red line, that then the gap between the bars and the red line is the level of borrowing that is indicated to take based on our current programme, capital programme, to meet that debt liability level, to maintain our cash level. So it's, I hope I can have explained that okay, but that's it. That's how we're going to be looking at it going forward. And this showing us what we need to maintain for that.
Again, that's very helpful. Thank you ever so much. Thank you, Chair.
Not seeing any further questions. That's quite a quick one. The actions required of the board are to review the report and seek assurance on treasury management activities and performance. I propose that the board has reviewed the report and has been assured about the treasury management activities and performance for quarter two. Can I have a show of hands? All those in favour, please show. Any against? And any abstentions? Seeing none. Thank you. Move now to item 10, which is the Revenue Budget Monitoring Report 2223 quarter two. The item is for pre-decision scrutiny prior to a decision by the executive on the 6th of December 2022. I would like to invite Michelle Grody, Assistant Director Finance, to present the report. We also have the Strategic Finance Lead, Pam Clipsom, and Adam Hoopley, Sue Maccock, Keith Nolan, and Mark Popwell, Popswell, excuse me, in attendance via teams and in the council chamber to help answer any questions. Thank you very much. And over to you, Michelle.
Thank you very much. So the report that will be shared with the executive on the 6th of December starts at 113 in your reports pack, and it's the revenue budget position for quarter two, so the position up to the end of September. The report summarises our forecasts against the revenue budget that was approved for the current year, and the appendices that start with the table on 121 give more details of the variances that are reported, and also provide updates on the use of the council's reserves and development funding initiatives. Our current forecast excluding schools is an underspend of 1.6 million, which is a movement of 2.3 million from the overspend reported in quarter one. So quite a lot of work's been done over the last quarter to update forecasts, given the current financial situation and the economic situation that Karen's just reported on. It was important that we recognised the impact of some of the inflation on our budgets, and so all those forecasts have been updated to give a better position. The table on page 114 shows a breakdown of this by services. But when we set our budgets for the current year, we included an inflationary increase based on predicted levels at the time. So back when we were setting the budgets, back towards the end of last year, inflation running at around 3%, now obviously CPI at 10%. So we were expecting to need to have some pressures in our budget around inflation increases. So we did increase our contingency budget when we set the budget for this year, and also in September, council approved in addition to the contingency budget to deal with some of the year inflationary increases, which has certainly helped the position that we've got. The forecasts assume that that contingency can meet the pressure around the pay award, but the other pressures are reflected in the projections that the services are making. So the significant areas where we're showing differences in our forecasts around inflation are particularly in the place directorate, where we can see the impact of the energy costs with our street lighting costs. So there's a pressure there of around 1.5 million. And in our highways maintenance contract, we've done some mid-year repricing of the maintenance contract to try and help the supply chain, especially the smaller businesses in there. And that's created a pressure for the council of £1 million, which is being offset in part by additional permitting and TRO income. We have got a budget underspend forecast on our insurance premium budget. We reset the budget there, expecting a cost pressure in that area, but we've been able to delay some of the re-tendering of that. So some of that pressure will kick in later in the year, but will impact more on next year. So we have got an underspend in that area, and also on our pension liabilities. And we have got additional grant coming around extended free rights to travel and independent living of 2.2 million, which we weren't aware of at the time of budgeting, which has also offset some of those pressures. Just to note that one pressure that's not been highlighted in here yet, that's still being worked through, is on home to school transport. It's one of those areas that September is where some of the key activity happens as the children go back to school. So lots of new contracts in that area at that time. So we're currently working through that budget to understand some of the pressures in that area. I think that's all I was going to mention. It's just whether we've got any questions on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michelle. Do we have any questions? Okay, you were quiet there. What have I done now? Right. In the report around the highways, it mentions that some of the budgetary overspend could be reduced depending on the winter pressures we face. How many, in terms of the number of grit runs, say, would we have to potentially not have to use for that pressure to be offset?
I don't know if Andy's still on the call. He can maybe explain what the expected norm is for winter maintenance in terms of winter.
Apparently, he's gone.
All right, okay. So we budget for standard. I'm not, leader might know a bit better than I do on that.
Yeah, please feel free.
I'm scratching my head from memory. I think we we budget for about 100 or so. Have to say, so far this year, touching on what I can find, October, it's been, so with the mild winter to date, it's, the runs have been reduced. But all we need is some snow, and then obviously, the budget just goes mad. So at the moment, I suspect we'll be under profile. But there is no forecast, isn't there, for December? And then, of course, once you're doing three runs a day or whatever, it soon diminishes. So, if that's any help.
It is. Thank you very much.
I've just had a message that it's 85 runs, just put on the screen.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Keith.
Thank you. There's another, it mentions there is a, shall I say, there's a unrealised cost pressure in respect to the fire service, if memory serves me rightly, in the report. In the medium to long term, how long can the service use its reserves to plug that gap?
Keith's on the, Keith's on the call, who is our strategic finance lead for fire. I'm not, is there a specific area that you was referring to in the report?
I'll have to find it. Bear with me. But it said that there, basically, it just said there was an unrealised cost pressure in in their budget, and they were using their reserves to meet that cost pressure currently. But obviously, once you use reserves, they're gone. So it was, how long could they they meet that for? I think it's in the specific appendix that relates to fire, which will be when I can find the appendices sheet.
I think it's around the whole time recruitment process that they go through. So it's not something they do every year. They do it as and when they they need to, I think. So probably Keith can comment a bit more on that, if that's okay.
Yep, certainly. If Keith's on the call and is able to comment, yeah.
Good morning. Yeah, I think that on that specific pressure, the reserves would last for probably three to four years. But the whole funding of the fire and rescue services has been reviewed in terms of its cost pressures as we go through budget setting.
Thank you very much for that. And one one final one for me, which is probably for Andrew. What implications will there be for us in terms of the increase in the referendum limit for council tax? Do we foresee any potential issues with our residents actually being able to pay such an increase due to the current outlook? And also, do we have any other additional funding available from central government?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, so I think there's quite a few bits of news from the autumn statement that was announced by the Chancellor last Thursday, which was worth bringing into into the chamber, really. So, as you know, as we've touched upon it briefly in some of the other items around significant changes economically in the country, there were a lot of announcements last Thursday that will affect local government, albeit we're still not yet clear on the precise implications for us as a council. So there were a number of billions of pounds of additional funding announced for social care pressures. So that's any up to authority would be able to tap into those. And again, we need to work out what the implications for us are. The fair cost of care reforms, there's been some changes to that. So some of the main chunks of that have been put back in time, albeit there is an expectation that some elements of that will still need to be implemented before before that delay. As you say, the council tax referendum limits have been changed. So the last spending review set limits of 3% broadly, split 1% for adult care, precepts, and 2% general rates. The announcement last week has increased that to 5%, so three for general, two for adult care. Each percent of council tax for us as a council brings in about three and a half million pounds, depending on the council tax base. So that gives a flavour of the amount of money that that can raise. But at the same time, the announcements also brought in changes that might increase our cost base as well. So the national living wage figure was increased by £10 an hour, clearly with contracts that are based on that, whether that's in the adult care sector, the school transport sector, for example. A lot of the services that we provide to the people of the county are predicated on things like that. So there's a lot of work to work through at the moment for the finance team. And we've been given the heads up that the settlement will be with us just before Christmas, round about the 21st of December, which will probably be the latest it's ever been. And that's a factor of the timing around the autumn statement. It was the latest autumn budget or statement that there's been, I think, at least in my memory. So the government departments are also working heavily through that at the moment. But we have been told that we'll be given some guidance by the government department before then, in terms of the things like the district before then, in terms of the things like the distribution formula that the money will be split up on. So, given the fact is we need to get a budget report out just before Christmas, it's going to be all feet to the floor in terms of getting a report out to the executive meeting, which is on the 4th of January, I think. So, yeah, plenty of work for us over there. In terms of collection rates, obviously the council tax collection is a function of the district councils, we keep regular contact with them in terms of how they are going, in terms of collection rates, albeit for the budget setting for next year at the moment, councils are still going through that process of understanding what their council tax base is, and how collection rates might affect on that. So, too early to tell, but clearly if we are into a recession, as Karen referred to in her paper, things like that might make it more difficult for people to pay their council tax bills, and that's where things like the council tax support system come in, again, which the districts run in their individual areas, so a lot to keep our eye on, but hopefully that answers your question.
It does, thank you, it's a very detailed answer, and not an easy question to answer, I appreciate. councillor Marple.
Thank you, Chairman. Question really is in relation to children's services and the legal costs, which highlights an overspend. Is the overspend related to sort of a specific issue, like a one-off, or is it actually a trend that we're at loggerheads, or slightly between central government policy and our policy, and actually this is an issue that's going forward and is going to keep escalating? Is it something we can control or not?
Yeah, feel free, Andrew.
I'll start, then I'll defer to Debbie's greater knowledge of the subject area for children's services, but yeah, so it has been a growing problem for us. We have our own, obviously we have our own internal legal function, and we have, over the last couple of years, been starting to experience a recruitment challenge within that area. I think we have brought it out in this committee before, albeit when we've been talking about HR data and the hard-to-recruit areas. Children's lawyers is really one of those most acute areas where we find it really difficult to attract and retain. We have made inroads into that in recent years, albeit we do rely heavily on locum support still in that area. And one of the reasons for the increase in the cost in that area is those locums are also becoming hard to recruit and retain as well, and therefore commanding quite a sizeable cost in that competitive recruitment market. And again, it's not just us who are experiencing this, I had it in my previous council as well, but also as well locally, legal costs and support is really, really challenging. I'll defer to Debbie now about the specific points about the legal, yeah, within the requirements of children's services itself.
Yeah, thank you. So, as Andrew has said, the predominant reason without a doubt is a challenge in terms of recruitment, meaning that we need to rely more on agency, and also more in terms of going out to the independent sector, so that is definitely the most significant driver. The second driver is that, obviously, we have, although it is now stabilising, seen an increase in the number of children who are looked after, you know, are in the care of the local authority, and obviously, those cases need to be represented in court, so you've got additional demand. And then clearly, we're also seeing, obviously with the increase in unaccompanied asylum seekers, and the sort of challenge around age assessments, again, a bigger drive in terms of a need for legal representation in court. But the predominant reason without doubt is the challenge in terms of recruitment.
Do you wish to come back, councillor Marple?
Yeah, thank you for that, and I think that explains it very well. I mean, our legal services are shared service between sort of Lincolnshire County Council and the districts. Is there merit in some of these where specialists, in effect, providers of legal, is, like we said, we're struggling to retain and recruit? Things like asylum seekers and perhaps other areas in children, could we not look at sort of perhaps working with a sort of more like in the East Midlands region to try and actually sort of share the cost, or somehow address the labour shortage issues that are going on? Thank you.
I think the challenge is that everybody across the East Midlands are struggling with being able to cope with their own demands. They're also seeing recruitment problems, they're also seeing increases in the number of children who are cared for by the local authority, and the challenge around age assessments and asylum seekers. So it does sort of feel in terms of, it's quite a competitive market out there, so in an ideal world, I think absolutely we would work collaboratively. I think the problem is, is that we're all really trying to fish from the same pond in terms of recruitment, so you become competitive rather than collaborative. And obviously, the lawyers work on a case-by-case basis, they need to represent individual children, so it is literally competing for those skills across the East Midlands, unfortunately.
councillor Dilk, she wished to.
I did, thank you ever so much, Mrs. Chairman. I think wherever we sit in the council chamber, I think we would all wish to recognise the work that is going on right now in these hugely challenging times, financial times, for all local authorities, you know, across the country. So I certainly recognise and welcome the achievement in your projected slight underspend, which I'm sure we all would welcome, rather than a slight overspend, or an overspend of any description. Clearly, we've got to wait and see what next year brings, or next financial year brings, and I'm sure we all look forward to that. I'll be enjoying Christmas. I was going to say to Andrew and all your team, thank you, enjoy Christmas, but I'm not sure you're going to get the same break that we hope to get, thank you.
councillor Hill.
Yeah, I'd just like to give a bit of feedback, because Debbie and I, and councillor Bradwell, and Rob Parker, and councillor Whittingham, were at the CCM conference earlier this week, which is always very good and always very informative. So we did have some quite detailed, generic feedback, I suppose, from a company called Pixel, which do the analysis of how the budget is going between sectors. And I think it's fair to say, the county council-type areas have actually done better than most other areas, so it's probably a better settlement than was anticipated, particularly in terms of the extra money to adult care, and also the not doing the reforms, but for one year, keeping the money we got for the reform. So it was better than anticipated, but bearing in mind, and obviously there's greater flexibility in terms of council tax, which I think will be, you know, a very challenging decision, whichever we do, because although you go at 5% by council tax, inflation is 10%. But what also came out of the discussion is, first of all, that we're not quite unique amongst social adult care councils and children councils in having an year overspend, most of them are actually trying to deal with an overspend within the year, quite substantial. So I think we should praise not only the finance staff, but also the staff in the social care areas managing to keep a lid on the financial pressure. But also, it was acknowledged also that although we've done better, there will be a cliff edge in two years' time, because there's a prediction of how it will go, so there will become a cliff edge in two years' time. And there's this relationship between the amount of council tax you take and the amount of grant you get, which I don't really understand, and I'll probably have in quiet time ask Andrew, but it appears if you don't take the full amount of council tax, it does affect the amount of grant you get, so I think that's something we'll have to explore as well. So it will be challenging, and we'll have some difficult decisions to make. I don't think district councils have done particularly well at all, they will have a very tough settlement, because they will be on 3%, and they have rising costs as well. So, some relatively good news in the early term. No, obviously fair funding and all that stuff, it seems to have been forgotten now for the moment, which is a shame, but, so fair confidence, but I think I expect a lively debate about where exactly we should pitch the council tax level, and we'll wait for the details of our individual allocation in December the 15th, is it, or 21st?
21st, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, councillor. Just on the fairer funding point that you made, Andrew, have we heard anything, or is it really just gone dead as a doornail, and do we need to start using our political angle and try and lobby to remind that promises were made?
Well, personally, I don't think, I mean, to be fair, we did, the dialage moved a little bit our way last year, which was, we got, was it 10 million or so more? To be blunt, I think for the next two years, nothing's going to change. It is set, and obviously then there will be another government of some description, and I think then it'll be back to the issue, but there's so much pressure on the government, and, you know, it's very difficult for them, but we mustn't lose sight of that, I don't think.
Anybody with any further questions? Seeing none, so the overview and scrutiny management board is invited to consider the attached report and to determine whether the board supports the recommendation to the executive as set out in the report, and agree any additional comments to be passed to the executive in relation to this item. All those in favour of the recommendation on the report, please show. Any against? And any abstentions? Seeing neither. Thank you. We move to item 11, which is the capital budget monitoring report, 22, 23, quarter two to 30th of September 22. This item is for pre-decision scrutiny prior to the executive on the 6th of December. Again, over to you again, Michelle. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So the capital monitoring report that will go to executive on the 6th starts at page 155 in your report pack, and the current forecast position is an underspend on our capital programme in the current year of just over £11 million. The majority of this variance is around our capital development contingency that we hold in the budget, so not on specific schemes. There are some smaller variances on the highways asset maintenance programme, a 3 million, just over 3 million overspend forecast there, and 2 million underspend on the fire and rescue equipment budget. Just to note, with the highways asset programme, they do usually overprogram their work to take account of any slippage that might occur due to bad weather, so that's normal for them to be forecasting an overspend on that in this particular time in the year. So we've identified a number of pressures on our larger projects, and they are going to be dealt with through our budget setting process, so another thing to keep us busy over the Christmas period, so we'll be including those in our budget proposal reports that come back through the executive in January, and that's all I was going to comment on, thank you.
Thank you very much, Michelle. Do we have any questions? councillor Bradwell.
Oh, yes, sorry, yeah, I was just checking, that I was on the right paper then, I was still thinking about the last one, sorry. Right, yeah, page 175, could I just ask a question? No, this is a very specific question, but it is something that troubles me, so I do need to raise it. I've been having conversation this week with councillors in Nettleham, which is my division, about sustainable travel. I'm working in a sustainable travel group, and we're very, very keen this cycling, and I can see that we're supporting it, and we're going to do a cost-benefit analysis. But we've also been having discussion, which ties in very much with what councillor Dilk said about the dangerous aspect of this. Some of the roadworks that we're doing, for instance, Rise Home Roundabout are wonderful for cars, and they improve the flow tremendously, but they are also now exceptionally dangerous for cyclists. So within the cost-benefit analysis, I would very much like to see a health and safety, an extensive health and safety piece of work, to see the dangers of encouraging children and individuals to travel on our roads on their cycles, with the increased speeds of the traffic, the increased volume. I do support it, by the way, you know, we need to go for sustainable travel, but we can't just do that on the one hand, and then put our routes in in such a way that cyclists can't use them. So this has been a big issue with the various parish councillors I've been talking to, so I really would like somebody to get back to me on that, please. It's that big a topic at the moment. I'd like to know the cost specifically that we're putting in for cycling, to encourage it, and how much work we're doing to analyse the safety aspects, especially if you're talking about getting children to school on their backs, for instance. At the moment, the children in Nettleham have been completely cut off from the Lincoln Schools by the work that we've done on the highways. There is no way they can cross that roundabout safely, even though that is part of our prescribed cycling route, walking and cycling. So I have got concerns, and if there's an officer who could get back to me, you know, within the next few weeks, doesn't need to be urgent, but I'd be very, very grateful, please. It's a biggie, actually, in my division, this.
I'm sure that will be done in due course, unless any officers here feel they're able to answer that, but if not, I'm sure it'll be done in due course.
I think all of this sits within the place directorate, the responsibility around home-to-school transport, and the local transport planning is all with them, so we'll ask somebody from that area to come back to councillor Bradwell.
No. Any further questions? Seeing none, so the actions of the overview and scrutiny management board are to consider the attached report and determine whether the board supports the recommendation to the executive as set out in the report, and to agree any additional comments in relation to the executive. Can I have a show of hands in favour of the recommendation, please? And any against? And any abstentions? Seeing... That's carried, thank you. We move now to item 12, which is the Boundary Commission for England 2023 Review of Parliamentary constituency boundaries. This item is for pre-decision scrutiny prior to a decision by the leader of the council between the 28th of November and the 2nd of December. The report is available in the supplementary agenda pack. I would like to invite Matthew Gerard, head of policy, to present the report. We also have the policy advisers, Daniel Larkin and Emily McGonigal, in attendance as well. Over to you, Matt.
Could I just, if you wouldn't mind, Chair, just to explain why it's coming in this form? Obviously, normally in terms of boundary changes, political issue, and normally that, unless there's something particular, some issue about effective governance, it doesn't come. So for example, the first round of consultation on the boundary changes, as a council, we didn't comment, although I'm sure I did comment in terms of some issues, and political parties did as well. So the second round of consultation has come out, which Matthew will explain in a minute. Unfortunately, the deadline for responses to be back is the 5th of December, and I know from previous experience, the boundary commission are rigid in their, they say, well, if you don't get your response in by the, it's forgotten, and we take no notice of it. So unfortunately, this is the last formal meeting before the 5th of December. Ideally, I would have liked this paper to go to the full council, so we could have had a debate, so that's why I've asked you to come forward, and as you'll see from the report, there is a particular issue in terms of good governance, which is highlighted. I'll let Matthew speak to the details, thank you.
Over to you, Matthew.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you for receiving this report. So this report is to consider responding to the third and final consultation on the 2023 boundary review. So the review commenced in January 2021, and seeks to spread MPs more equally across the population of the country. Overall, the UK is intending to retain 650 MPs, and except for five exempt areas, these are to represent populations somewhere between 69,000 to 77,000 people. In the East Midlands, applying that ratio across Derbyshire, Ostringtonshire and Northamptonshire, would give an electorate equal to whole numbers of constituencies, and therefore whole numbers of MPs, but Lincolnshire is considered too large to have seven MPs, and too small to have eight MPs. Therefore, it necessitates a need to have a one member of parliament at least cross-border with another county area. Rutland, if combined with Lincolnshire, would give you a ratio equivalent to 7.93 MPs across that area. And in the boundary review's initial proposals, that was the proposition that you would have one MP, that would be cross-boundary between Rutland and Lincolnshire, as well as add further seven MPs for the rest of Lincolnshire itself. The revised proposals came out a couple of weeks ago, and now seek to include Leicestershire, or parts of Leicestershire, with that proposal, so you would have a member of parliament shared between three county areas, and as members will see from the papers, that then creates a whole range of additional bodies and agencies that that MP would have to work with in order to properly represent their constituents. So three county councils, two district or borough councils, compared to the previous proposal, which would have been for two counties and one district area. So the proposals to add those harbour villages, I suppose they raise questions as to the effectiveness that that MP can represent that geographical area, and the proposal in the report is that the leader provides a response to the consultation, seeking a reversion to the... seeking a reversion to the, the original proposal, which would have been for a shared MP with Rutland and Lincolnshire. Within the, the calculations, I think there, there's also a slight reference that Leicestershire is in, including the city, is entitled to slightly more than seven MPs. And so the, the crux of the argument comes down to who, who misses out in, in effect. It's Lincolnshire and Rutland combined is just slightly less than, than the full total. Leicestershire is, is just over. In the original proposals, the balance was in favour of, of Lincolnshire and Rutland. And the revised proposals has skewed it back towards, to include a small element of, of Leicestershire. And the proposal would be to, to seek the change back to those original proposals and to advocate for those.
Thank you very much. Any comments, questions? Councillor Dilks?
I'm not a member of any political party, as you know. And I know the political parties will be making their representations, but I've got to say, when I saw the, first of all, I would say, you know, there was an expectation that what we've, what we were given, however long ago it was, it seems like it was a couple of years ago or certainly 18 months ago, the original proposals, there was an expectation amongst colleagues that I know that they thought that was broadly what we were going to get. And it does seem to me to be extraordinarily bizarre to, and I don't know if it's how unusual it is, Matthew, you know, to, to have a parliamentary constituency that covers three effectively county councils. I can understand, you know, the previous suggestion for our area. I am, you know, I live in the Deepings, we're South Holland and the Deepings. And as I understand it, we were going to be the Deepings, Stamford and, and into Rutland, was it the whole of Rutland? Which kind of made sense, I've got to say, but to then add parts of Leicestershire as well, also as well looking at, you know, what might happen in, with devolution. I'm not sure what, what's going to happen to Rutland when devolution sort of comes, but that, that again is another, and it just seemed a bit cockeyed, if I could call it that. As I say, I don't think I'll be making representations, but that's just an observation. I don't know what others think, but thank you.
Do you want to respond to that at all, Matthew?
I would just respect.
I can. It is, when you read the actual boundary report, they themselves say, it's almost saying, well, we're not sure about this. There is sometimes, they don't like crossing counties. We have Brig and Gould in the current, which is in your part, which crosses sort of two county areas. To be across three, I think is almost unique. I'm not sure it's ever happened before. And, and I think the local view is, Phil has said, is that there is a sample with Rutland that that makes sense because they sort of are together. And the Deepings probably are better off all in South Kesteven, but, you know, but that, it is, there is no other example where you go three and it's a funny, strange.
You know, I am a, a member of the Veterans Advisor and Pension Committee for the East Midlands and we cover a massive area from Lincolnshire to Leicestershire and Rutland. And let me tell you, it's blooming hard work to function like that for, and there are multiple of us, we, there are several of us and we live in various parts of the, the East Midlands, so it's not so bad. But for a single MP to cover three counties and there's probably, and I think the report says five, five local authorities within those three counties is, to my mind, absolutely ludicrous. You cannot do a job effectively spreading yourself that thin. Two counties, you could, not ideal, but okay, as you, as you've said, councillor Dilks, two counties, you're close together, it's workable, it's, it's, it's something you can understand. Three, I think is absolutely crackers. And I, I'd feel sorry if they don't, if the boundary commission aren't willing to change the, their minds, I feel very sorry for whoever tries to take that seat on because they're going to have a very hard time. Yes, you should come back.
A very short one. I mean, as, as Martin said, you know, it makes sense, Stamford being in with Rutland in, in many ways, because when we look at planning issues on South Kesteven, you know, Rutland comes right up to the border of Stamford and I think it, it's sort of, so there are developments that are effectively Stamford that are actually in Rutland, if you, if you know what I mean. So that kind of does make sense, but stretching it right over to, does it go right? It includes Melton Mowbray, doesn't it? Oh, oh, it's up to the border of Melton, is it? Forgive me. But even so, you know, it's, it just, I'm sure the political parties, I don't know if Martin's, but others might have something to say about it in their, in their representations. Thank you.
Any further comments, questions? Seeing none, so the board, the board, oh, sorry, councillor Brooks, my apologies.
Thank you, chairman. Yeah, I'd just like to say that I would support going back to the previous proposals for Stamford and Rutland, but just also to say that a lot of the changes that the boundary commission did make to the proposals for Lincolnshire did make sense. This doesn't, this is totally out of order, but in, in the, the Boston and Skegness constituency proposals, originally they had the South Lincolnshire new constituency proposal and they were going to carve off the, some southern parishes and part of the district wards into the new South Holland, South Lincolnshire constituency. And that was sort of completely ridiculous, splitting up bits off of Boston and Skegness and putting it in with the South Lincolnshire. And it, for instance, gave me, it would have split my county division up and I suddenly had had an MP South Lincolnshire and an MP for Boston and Skegness to deal with. So it gave difficulties like that. So I do, I support it, I support what they did there, the changes and, and that they made there, and they were good changes, but this is ridiculous really. And so I would support us supporting going back to the previous proposals for this Stamford and Rutland.
Do you wish to come on?
I mean, I think it is, I think councillor Brooks is correct. The revised proposals were neater for the Boston area and I think possibly, because it's a numbers game, it's rigid. I mean, in the past, sometimes they've been more flexible, but this time you, you must not exceed whatever. So whether there's, we can look at, because of the current proposal, you know, which is being proposed, is that we just say revert back to the original and we support the rest. Whether we can just look at some tinkering around the Boston area to keep the numbers within their guidelines would be helpful. So we'll look at that and if it's possible, we, so a ward or so, because it's all done on district wards, but so if you've got two member wards, it becomes a lot of population. But we can look at that and see if it's possible, just, it's not quite, because Deepings, of course, is 10,000 and that moves one way. You've got to add 10,000 on or something like it, haven't you? So I would support looking if we can, but if we put in a proposal which doesn't exceed or either way, it will just be rejected.
You wish to come back?
Yes, please, thank you, chairman. I, I mean, I, I support the new proposals as far as Boston and Skegness is concerned, so I wouldn't want to see that tinkered with, to be quite honest. I'm happy that it's gone back to, to how it should be and that those southern parishes on Boston and Skegness, which were part of the Boston Borough, have, have been moved back out of the South Lincolnshire proposal and put back under the new proposals with Boston and Skegness. That makes it neat and tidy again. And that was the representations that most of my parishes made and I made also to the boundary commission. So what I don't want to see is a, a proposal going forward that changes that in anyway, because I'm happy, I'm happy with that and the people of the parishes and everything that I represent are happy with that as well. But so I support sticking with the new proposals, except for the Stamford and Rutland part, which ought to revert back to the original proposal, I feel.
If you wish to come back.
We can look at it, but the problem is, you cannot support a proposal which exceeds or is below. And I think in the case of the revised Boston, revised South Lincolnshire, if you, if they lose the Deepings, that means they have got to gain some, but as I've said, we can look at it, but it is, I'm afraid, a choice between lesser evils and the balances between which is wor, if it comes to that, which is worse to have an, an MP expected to represent three county areas, two let boards and all the rest of it, and having the Deepings within the South Kesteven MP? Or whether there's some parts of Boston, the boundary between Boston and South Holland is changed a bit? All I can say is we can look at it, but I, I have to be clear, the proposal is that the, the priority worry is the, the three, the MP representing three county areas. But, so I just need to be clear, because I will have to respond on behalf of the council, because as I've said, this is the last formal meeting we have.
Yep.
Can I come back? It's going to make, that's making it difficult for me in this debate because, you know, the representations that my parishes made and I made myself and which brought it, which is supported by the new proposal. So I would like us to be keeping that part of the, the new proposals, please, an effort being made to keep that.
If it's possible, we will, but I'm not promising it will be. I mean, my, you know, my division under the new proposals, which I'm not objecting to, is split in half. And indeed, where I live, which is halfway between Bourne and Grantham, I will, we will be actually living in the, the Rutland and Stamford, as indeed will the people of Ponton. But I think there comes an element with this numbers game that there, there are some. So all I can say, councillor Brooks, is that I'll, we'll do what we can and if it's possible, we'll try and amend it. It has to be on a ward basis, you can only move district wards around, that's their rules, not our rules. So, but I, I, and we need to be clear with the committee that if it comes to the point is the priority. And my, my advice is that the biggest worry is having an MP representing three counties. A lesser worry is, you know, you know, I, I've had it before where I've had my divisions being in two different associate constituencies, but it, you, that, that, that's all right. And actually, yeah, you can moan at two MPs instead of just one, so you can spread your moans. It does work in a sense. So I need to be clear about that, that, that's an, I understand what, what you're saying, councillor Brooks, but it might come to a choice, but I don't know. Without looking at the map and everything, it's difficult to guarantee, but we'll try our best to come up with a proposal that does that.
Yep, councillor Patter.
Yeah, thank you, chairman. Just to say, it does seem quite bizarre what they come up with, but it was quite bizarre what they'd come up with with the county council recommendation, almost to think for us to get focused and think, this just isn't on, we've got to do something about this. And it almost seems the same with this. I think they got Croll and stretching right across to Grantham at one point, going crossways on that first recommendation. So I just wonder if they're doing it on purpose to get us focused, but have we got that software whereby, I think we had it for the county council election, where it was like a balloon effect, if you moved it one area, balls are blue and it lessened it the other area, whatever, so you, so you can actually tell, you know, what fits better in it. As Martin said, it is about the numbers, whatever fits with numbers is going to be the key. Thank you.
Seeing, did you wish to speak, councillor Dilks, are you having to make your way for time? Yes, that's what, have you, you've got the meeting, haven't you? No, no problem. Yes, yeah, no problem. In, in that case. In, in that case, I will go to the, the recommendations, as I don't see anybody else wishing to, to make a comment, and they are as follows. To consider the attached report and determine whether the board supports the recommendation to the leader of the council as set out in the report, pardon me, and agree any additional comments that have been made. We've certainly made some additional comments and I'm sure the leader will take those on board when he, in due course. All those in favour of the recommendation, please show now. Any against and any abstentions? That's carried. Item 13 is the scrutiny committee work programme. This item provides an update to the work of the adults, adults and community wellbeing scrutiny committee and the health scrutiny committee for Lincolnshire. I would like to invite councillor Hugo Marfleet, chairman of the adults and community wellbeing scrutiny committee, and councillor Carl Macy, chairman of the health scrutiny committee for Lincolnshire, to present their updates. Firstly, over to councillor Marfleet.
Thank you, chairman, chairman. Interesting times in the world of adults and I think we do have to just say what a great job they are doing in the circumstance and everything that's going on in the adult worlds and the pressures. We have had an extra meeting and I'll go through some of the updates, but in some areas we have gone forward, in other areas, central government has changed its plans a bit and so we have to sort of sit back. What I would just like to highlight is the following, is that on the 7th of September, the committee received an update on the Greater Lincolnshire Public Health Arrangements. This, as we saw, had positive benefits for the communities of Lincolnshire and we look forward to sort of further information coming forward to potentially making this pilot scheme permanent, but we are following that one through. But the first indications are all is going well and we are learning lessons and good benefits. The committee held an additional meeting on the 28th of September to consider three pre-decision items, see page 181. In one instance, the market sustainability fair cost of care item, events have now overtaken this decision and in the last week's autumn statement, the government announced a deferral of the fair cost of care programme. Future works, the agenda for our next meeting on the 30th of November was published on Tuesday of this week and this includes the four items listed on page 182 of today's report. Just for the record, the item on active recovery beds for winter 2022-23 is now an open report and was published on Tuesday. On this theme, which I understand is also being persuaded by the health scrutiny, pursued by the health scrutiny committee, the committee will be considering an item on the length of January on acute hospitals' admission to discharge care pathways. There is just one thing to the future work programme, De Wintcor Lincoln Extra Care update will now be considered on the length of January 2023 and not the 28th of June 2023. De Wintcor is an extra care housing facility which opened in March of this year. A proposal for a further extra care housing unit will be considered in February 2023 for Langwick Road, Boston. And that is the updates. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much, councillor Marfleet. Do we have any questions for councillor Marfleet at all? Seeing none, so I shall pass over to councillor Carl Macy for the health scrutiny committee report.
Yes, thank you, chairman. I will take the report as read within the documents and I will just cover some updates. So the committee's activity since its last report to this board is set out on pages 185 to 187. I would like to highlight three items and these are firstly GP access. GP provision has remained a serious concern for the committee, in particular how patients find it so difficult to get appointments, usually through accessing unhelpful telephone systems. In addition, NHS England has been compiling over the last year what they class as experimental data on GP practices, which shows that Lincolnshire has the lowest proportion of appointments in primary care conducted by GPs, with others such as nurse practitioners and physiotherapists undertaking the highest proportion of appointments. In response, the local NHS stated that not all of the appointments in primary care had been captured by the national data. The committee was not entirely convinced by the response and it will look at further when it is next scheduled. Secondly, I'd like to speak about the closure of Ashley House in Grantham. Ashley House in Grantham, which provides inpatient rehabilitation services, has been closed on a temporary basis since the height of the pandemic. As reported on page 186, the committee accepts that this is not a substantial variation requiring a full consultation, but is going to participate in targeted consultation as the committee is not fully satisfied with the rationale of replacing inpatient services with community based services. Thirdly, East Midlands ambulance services, as reported on page 186, 2,400 hours of ambulance time was lost in Lincolnshire because of delays handing patients to staff at A and E departments. The committee is going to pursue this firstly by seeking The committee is going to pursue this firstly by seeking information from United Lincolnshire Hospitals NHS Trust in December, which will cover the hospital process from admission to discharge, and secondly, in March next year, with an overview of the urgent and emergency care system to be presented by the Integrated Care Board. In regards to future work, there are no changes to the work programme as set out on pages 188 to 190. In addition to the items on urgent care and discharge, I would also like to highlight two further items, which are the four NHS services. In December, we will receive an item on the progress with the implementation of four service changes, which were approved by the local NHS in May of this year as part of the Lincolnshire Acute Services Review. This includes progress with the specification for the conversion of Grantham A and E to a 24/7 urgent treatment centre. And secondly, dental services, access to NHS dentists recurring item that we have seen on the committee. In January, we expect to hear whether recent changes to the NHS dental contract will make NHS dentistry more attractive, particularly in parts of the east coast such as Mabelford. And very finally, Suicide Prevention and Mental Health Work Group. In addition to the work of the full committee, the Suicide Prevention and Mental Health Working Group held a further meeting on the 27th of September, where representatives of the local mental health trust presented information on how they manage patients on their waiting list for children and young people, working age adults and older adults. A further meeting will now take place in January and will examine urgent and emergency mental health services, including crisis. I'm happy to take any questions, chairman.
Thank you very much for that report. I'm not seeing anybody wishing to ask either yourself or councillor Marfleet any questions, so I shall go to the actions required, and they are as follows. The board is required to determine whether it is satisfied with the activity undertaken since the 25th of August 2022 by the Adults and Community Wellbeing Scrutiny Committee and the Health Scrutiny Committee for Lincolnshire. The board is also required to determine whether it is satisfied with the planned work programme of both the respective committees. I propose that the board is satisfied with the activity undertaken since August 2022 and is also satisfied with the planned work, with the planned work programme for the respective committees. All those in favour, please show now. Any against and any abstentions? That's carried. And this is the final item, which is information only, which is the overview and scrutiny management board work programme. There are no amendments to the published work programme. That now concludes the business of the meeting. Thank you for everybody's attendance, and I wish you all a safe journey home. Thank you.